Calling meeting back into session. Just to point out, we need to have a closed session at the end of this work session. So for Sherri Wilton, Economic Development. Okay. We don't have an agenda other than that this morning. So what I would like to do is turn the floor over to Mr. Prairier. Since he seemed to...
Got no sticky notes?
None of those.
No sticky notes. Okay. Gentlemen, at our last meeting, I said that I would come back with a proposed budget with what my priority was when it was asked was no property tax rate increase. So, and what the chairman said at the last meeting was absolutely right. You will have to cut. So how do we get to $896,000? And also to reduce the property tax to keep it at 70 cents? So gentlemen, I've a... This is the list. This is my proposal for to get to that flat tax rate. Is first, I will call for a 1% reduction across the board on all county departments. Which, and this is my figure. I did not ask the county manager to come up with this. She kind of guided me in the right direction, but this is my math on this. Secondly, we had some discussion with the Health Department at the last meeting. And that I will ask that they would, instead of us giving 400,000 out of our fund balance, that they spend down 400,000 on their fund balance, which gives a total of 782,151.
What was the first figure?
That's the amount that you'd like them to appropriate in addition?
That's the 1% cut.
He's asking them to fund 400,000 out of their money.
Okay.
Yeah. Second is the compression study. It's highly probable that we're going to have a new revenue stream next year from a non-tax base. And I'll ask that we hold off on that study this year, which is $216,000, given a total of 998,151. Next, I ask that we retain the current cell phone policy, which would cut out $22,590, which gives us a total of 1,020,741. And finally, just as with the compression study, I ask that we hold off on the land use study plan. The city allocated $60,000, but our part was 140. So you put the 140 in, that's 1,160,741. You subtract the 2 cent property tax increase of 896,000. That gives you 264,741. I also propose just a penny increase on the fire tax. Going off of the budget, one penny generated 347,588. So an additional penny would give a grand total of 695,176. So with that 695,176 plus the 264,741, that gives you a total of 959,917, which fully covers the request given by the county manager in the budget by $11,592. And I request that the remaining $11,592 go into contingency. So gentlemen, that is my proposal on a way, a sound way to not increase property taxes.
All right. Do you have any increase for the budget of economic development?
That was not included in my proposal, but I would be willing to look at using a fund balance distribution going into economic development.
All right. How about the water and fuel fund?
That was not included in my budget.
About the schools?
Schools remain where we funded as proposed by the county manager. They were not touched.
So how does that affect DSS where when we have looked in the past, when I voted for cross-the-board cuts during the recession, we realized that when we did a 4 or 5% cut across the board, it equated to some departments that depended on match funding for state and federal funds, more like a 10% match. So what is that? How does this affect DSS?
Well, I asked the county manager that question yesterday, especially departments that receive federal funding. And her opinion was that she... Heidi, if you want to explain, I don't want to take your words.
Well, we talked about 1% being small enough that we would still be able to find our matches, but it would hurt in other operating areas. There's enough local funds going into each budget that we could tap the 1%, we thought, without the match, but it is going to be felt for sure.
I want to ask a question about the $400,000 Health Department. You're calling that a cut, but you moved that from one fund balance to the other?
I'm asking them to spend down that appropriation.
A cut? You got to cut a expense.
But it's...
You shuffled it from one fund balance to the other. I understand what you're saying. And it does look like a cut, but it's really not. You moved that money from one spot to the other. But you didn't cut an expense. If you'd have cut enough positions or enough something else out of that budget to make $400,000, would have been a true cut. But you moved the $400,000. So this...
That $400,000 wasn't a line item in this budget. It was part of the budget.
Yeah, but they're funded with... When you look at the fund balance items in these different departments, it's not like they're sitting there with their own separate account with $400,000 in it. My understanding. It's almost, we're going to pay it anyway.
So we talked about the fund balance from the Health Department, for example, being a placeholder in their budget and it being a balance or an offset with the general fund, the Fund 10 appropriation. So yes, you can up the appropriation from the Health Department fund balance in order to decrease that general fund appropriation for this year. But once you expend that funds, you know, you're going to need to come back next year and you'll have to double up your general appropriation.
And I fully recognize that.
Okay.
And my attempt is, just as I said before, that there's a... We may have a, an additional revenue stream coming in next year.
Want to support that additional revenue stream?
Well, I've got a track record on it.
It's going to take staff some time to go through and actually calculate a 1% reduction on operating budgets. I'm not certain that those numbers are right at this point.
Yeah.
We'll need a little time to go through and come up with that figure. Correct. That's the consensus of the board.
I mean, if we don't have the consensus, no need to ask the staff to do it.
Right.
Well, I listened to you all last meeting kind of talk about priorities. Remember, I was the last one to talk. Commissioner Powell talked about the schools. We heard about EDC. And none of that is reflected in your budget or your proposal. And so I think I will take my proposal with my comments and make it a proposal. So I will look at funding the way the county manager presented the budget with the addition of adding $250,000 to EDC operating, $25,000 for a YMCA study. Looking at the compression study implemented in two years instead of three years, the way the manager presented it, which in the budget, she funded it $216,330. To do it in two years, we need $363,471.50. So what she's already put in the budget compared to what we need to do in two years is a difference of 147,141.50, which comes up to around $422,416.50 or 500. One penny, you said, would generate around 438,586. I will look at taking the $1 million out of fund balance and putting in a water sewer reserve fund for future infrastructure projects. I wanted us to continue to look at cutting Woodsdale by 30,000. I know we had discussed that they are under contract and that dollar figure is in the contract, but we also put in the contract that they should be actively working at reducing their ISO rating. And they did not participate in a county-wide ISO training. So I would like to see if that is considered somewhat of a breach of contract and allow us to cut them by 30,000. Given that there's been a lot of discussion this work session about the Health Department and us looking at some possible cuts, I would suggest that the county does some type of study of the services offered by the Health Department to see where we are up there. And while we're under that study, I would propose a cut to the public health nurse director one position, which I think is funded somewhere at around 80-some thousand dollars currently. Not sure if that'd be a true savings of that total amount. And I would freeze all other vacant positions for that department.
Why you want to freeze just for that department?
Because we've had a lot of discussion here with the Health Department. And I think that we need to get some better... We have some questions answered, and I don't know if we can get them answered in 20 days between now and the time that the budget is due to be passed. And so this gives us some time to freeze those positions until we get further answers. So all the increases to the... Oh, I did want to discuss. I had discussed with some of you all about farmers being exempt for a well permit, but after discussing it with the Health Director, she suggested that instead of making them exempt the way they used to be, that we lower that fee from 300 to 100, which will at least cover the testing that when they send it for our farmers. I serve on the corporate extension planning board, and I think NCRS was not aware that that fee is always 300. So they've been doing some programming and telling the farmer they're exempt until they get over there. They don't, they find out they're not. And it's been one of our number one industry here in Person County. I think any way we can to help the farmer, especially the small farmers in this county, that will help them. So I will lower that fee from 300 to 100 for well permit.
Agricultural well permit.
Agricultural well permit. Now for home or dwelling.
Can we put that in the motion to vote on?
We can do that as part of your budget adjustments. I need to do some revenue reduction there for that.
So my proposal reflects an increase in EDC in the operating by almost 100% $250,000 for YMCA study and then doing a compression study in two years instead of three. Oftentimes or not, we put these studies and these compensation and compression type studies, we do it in three years. By the time we get to the third year, we're already behind.
Mr. Powell, you getting anything you're there? Maybe a question or two. You were talking about the YMCA study. What was your impression when you had the meeting in Danville? I guess my question is, based on that, whether we actually need to do a study?
So Chairman and Vice Chairman and myself met with a few of their board members and their executive director. And they're not really in a position to say, yes, they would expand and serve our residents until we contract with a consultant who comes in and does a feasibility study to determine whether or not the community would be able to support and sustain a YMCA facility and certain price points and certain location options would be taken into account in this survey. And the results of that have to be positive before the umbrella YMCA would consider expanding into a new market.
The study could put it to rest if this can't, if the study shows this community wouldn't support some of the services that a Y provides. And then if that does that, I'm done with it. But when the citizens voted on the ballot in 2008 to support something like this, I think we can at least do our due diligence 11 years later of seeing if it can really make a go in Person County or not.
That was a little bit different scenario, that vote, from what I remember. But this would be a per person or per family charge? It's not, it would not be a free public pool?
No. It would be fee-based, no different than we were looking at for the recense.
I think they mentioned that their rates in Danville were about $60 a month for a family membership. So it would be a competitive pricing.
Why can't they pay for their own study if they want to come instead of us paying for the study to get them to come here or not to come here?
Because if you were attracting a Y to this community as a community project, then you would try to raise that money. We're looking at doing a partnership like Currituck County did with North Hampton Roads YMCA.
Has the Y done feasibility studies in other locations by their own?
Those communities.
On their own dime?
Like the Boys and Girls Club, they want you to raise so much type of money if you have some community members that are interested in doing that. have some community members that are interested in doing that.
But my question was, has the Y YMCA done feasibility studies on their own dime in the, in other communities?
I believe Danville did that. They were already there and they did an expansion for the new Y to see if it could be.
So why shouldn't we be any different? Because you voted, because you voted for this in your strategic planning process and this is the first step to see if it even, even a go?
They're not asking.
They're not asking to come here.
We're the one.
We're asking them.
It's a business decision for them.
It's a business decision and if they know that it's more likely not a possibility, well, his twenty-five thousand dollars will prove that you, you're not coming here.
In your proposal is the, uh, I saw a couple, a couple that were eliminated, the YES program and there was one other I can't remember. There were two, both of those dealt with the vulnerable.
Program isn't being eliminated, it just, we had to move money around.
Well, yeah, well, you cut an employee.
No, that employee's gonna be, um, their, the total amount that was allocated from JCPC was reduced, that employee's gonna stay, um, in that position at a reduced amount. And we hadn't decided at the time that we had originally submitted the budget and so that's why this time around, that decision has now been made by JCPC to move that money. It's just a wash.
Well, that's a important part, I mean, it'll be a small number of people, but it's a vulnerable, uh, segment of population that needs a lot of attention. How about the extension agent? I saw something somewhere on that.
It's in the contracted services?
Yep, it's a increase in contracted services for cooperative extension to take that position from part-time to full-time.
Right.
Um, your cost would be, um, thirty-two-five, um, your increased cost would be thirty-two-five.
Yeah.
Um, we partner right now with Granville, share him fifty-fifty and Granville has approved the budget for them to have him full-time. So we would be looking for either a new part-time or if the money is available, a new full-time, which is what NC State is recommending we transition to.
Considering the fact that agriculture puts about ninety-two million dollars a year into Person County's economy, I think that's a good plan.
I attended a field day last week with several farmers at, on the ANT campus and I mentioned that possibility of us having him a full-time and they were very ecstatic.
Yeah, that makes common sense to me, so. Kyle, let me ask you a question on the Y. Do you think that would be a good addition to the community?
Oh, absolutely, I think if they come here and, um, it would be a, a good addition to the community, but as a businessman yourself, you know, if someone wants to, um, you either know that this is a good fit for you or you want someone to prove that it's a good fit for you. And I have no problem with a YMCA being located here. I think it would be a good fit, but I just feel that if they really wanted to come here, they would, they would have done a study on their own and they'd be knocking on our door when we first approached them instead of us paying for a study to prove that they were right and not coming here on their own.
Well, to answer your question on whether or not they paid for studies in the past, uh, we have no really way, really, no way to confirm that. We can only assume that they saw some attractive markets, but, uh, they've got some smaller markets in Person County already under their umbrella. And, uh, here again, I don't know, I would think that that smaller market will suit them as opposed to vice versa, but, uh. How does that work if, if scenario, does the county build a facility and they maintain? Running Danville.
To be decided.
Of course, Y was already there, but to, they did a study themselves or, I don't know, who paid for it, but they did a survey to see if it would, uh, support a larger Y and that building, that facility, uh, they said cost fifteen million dollars. And the way they went about that was raising private funds and whatnot, so it can be done either way. But it's been there, I think, ten years and they aren't debt-free at the moment.
The only one that, um, I'm familiar with that has a somewhat of a county-type partnership, which we don't know exactly what that will look like with Person County, but Currituck County operates one in partnership with North Hampton Roads Y. They house a senior center, rec senior, uh, rec center. They house, um, Parks and Rec, they house some type of partnership with the hospital with some type of rehabilitation or some type of program. The county built the facility, leased it back to them for a very nominal fee. They pay the staff, they pay to operate and they pay the life bill, so on and so on. Which has always been, what I've heard is the argument is, the county's never run a rec center, so what would it cost to operate? Here we're talking about working with a organization that does it for a living, does it all the time, they haven't done that. When I remember, we were looking at some plans for a rec senior center. When I went and met with the Y, this was in Raleigh, I'm trying to think of, um, on your EDC board, his brother. Insurance man.
Philip Allen?
Philip Allen's brother.
My, I don't know, Philip Allen's brother?
Yeah, younger brother, he works for the Y in Raleigh, I went and met with him. When I showed him some plans that a property owner here in Person County had just kind of drawn out to show us that their building could work for a senior center, he looked at, he said, well, where are your family restrooms? Where are your, uh, family changing rooms and stuff? All we had was men and women, stuff like that, we don't know, because we haven't never been, we haven't built one. So I think if there was gonna be a go, then obviously this will let us know and then we're obviously working with somebody that, uh, that knows the business.
Considering what we have coming down the pike on schools, it's not a good thing to consider even a fifteen million dollar bill.
We don't know if it'd be fifteen million, just like we don't know what the school's capital's gonna be.
We don't, but we know that one's coming.
We also heard from superintendent that we're losing school population, so do we need new schools, old school, what do we need to do? We don't, we have no clue, it's like we have no clue about what this would feel.
This, you're assured that that's coming, that change is coming, that requirement mandate is coming and this other is optional.
And this study may say that we don't need it, so you might not have a fifteen million dollar bill and you might have a two, you might not have any, but we don't know. And other times we don't know, this board, we pay for studies.
The currently, do you know how many community, I don't know what they call, I haven't been in one in thirty years in all pools there are that, uh, citizens have access to?
Is that all citizens?
I guess they're all membership, I mean, you pay your dues or buy into it, is that the way it goes? I don't know. I haven't had one, been in one since my kids were kids and that's been a long time ago. But, I mean, you pay a summer membership fee and.
Thirty years ago, when you had a membership, did you have any, did you see any Afro-Americans there with memberships or blacks?
Not that I recall, no.
Are there exclusionary practices?
Point of order, it's not a public area.
But I just, I think a lot has changed in those thirty years.
I don't know, I'm thirty, I'll be thirty-six August and I've had to swim in Stone River or Hillsboro all my life.
Why do you not swim in Hico and May?
Well, actually just walk in the water, because I can't swim.
Well, let's get back to the point of order, the, um, Mr. Powell, if I remember right, you had the Y study included in your EDC. Uh, I had it on there as a, as something to look into, but I had no clue that it would cost, what is it, you're talking about twenty-five thousand dollars?
I mean, I, I think it was mentioned. I think it was mentioned when we did the strategic planning, they, all of us voted for.
I don't think the twenty-five thousand was mentioned, is it?
I don't, I don't remember.
A lot of difficulty, that's the good thing about it being on tape.
Well, let's go back and look at it.
We will.
But I put it on a long list because I think civil asked for six or eight.
Yeah, we narrowed it down to.
But we made it on a short list that you voted for.
Yeah, that's what. It's, I still don't mind it, I'm behind twenty-five thousand dollars for, when they have essentially pretty much told us that Person County's not gonna be able to support because the fees for membership and, uh.
Who told us that?
I'm sorry?
Who told us that?
They said the study will tell us that, they won't come until the study has confirmed it's sustainable.
The study dictates where they think a place is feasible. If it's not feasible, they won't participate. All right. Do we need to study some more or are we ready for some motions?
Would you like?
I make a motion to direct the county staff to review my numbers on my proposed budget. And if it is in line, if my, if the math is in line with my math, that the county manager prepare a budget ordinance reflecting this proposed budget.
Mr. Chairman. Make a substitute motion that we accept Commissioner Ray Jeffers' budget proposal and direct the manager to prepare a budget ordinance reflecting that proposal.
Okay, floor is open for discussion.
Commissioner Jeffers' proposal has the position elimination and hiring freeze for the Health Department. Are there questions for the Health Director who is here with us this morning about the impacts of that? Or Janet, if you're prepared to say anything about that?
The biggest concern I have with the Health Department is we don't control, as commissioners, we don't control anything involved with that other than the checkbook. Now, there's already been some, uh, personnel problems that have potentially led to a court case, which is gonna leave us with the liability, not the Health Board. And I personally think that we need to, uh, we've got an awful lot of risk with no control and that's not good for anybody. And so, uh, I agree with Mr. Jeffers in the fact that, uh, we need to start protecting ourselves. Now, I'm not saying that it's, uh, and the biggest problem right now is we don't know all of the circumstances that go on at the Health Department, but we are certainly liable for all of the consequences. And so, uh, I think, uh, we should go along with his proposal and see if we can get together with the Health Board and see what we can work out. But otherwise, I think we need to start cutting our losses or protecting our losses, potential losses.
I'll say this regarding the Health Department. I've heard things, but I'm going off past experience and I'm, will go on record that I think Janet's one of the finest health directors in the state of North Carolina. That's all I have to say about that.
All right, we got two motions on the floor.
You got a substitute motion?
Yeah, we have to vote on his first. Okay, all right. Uh, and what is his motion?
Do you have any numbers clarification?
We'll have to, well, with that either proposal, staff will have to go back and run the numbers and look at revenue impacts, so we can't give you the exact balance to zero amount in this moment here, but we can take your direction and craft a budget using these guidelines.
Okay. How long do I take you to get his numbers?
I can, I'll, I can have it by Friday, but it's gonna, it'll take us a while, we'll need to get with the Health Department to see what some of those impacts are, um, so it'll take us a couple of days to collect them.
But if my motion passes, you could have it ready for us by our next meeting, ordinance, a budget ordinance.
Yes.
Both, I can have it ready, the budget ordinance by the next meeting. Your proposal would be, as far as timing, calculating what the results are, are, are simpler than Commissioner Carreras', because that one takes a lot more calculation, but either way, I think we can get the proposal done in time before the next meeting.
All right, all in favor of Mr. Clayton's motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
No.
Okay. If y'all could give us some numbers back, we'll.
Okay.
We'll proceed.
We've got a couple of other little adjustments that we will make you aware of, that would be part of that proposal, they're just, they're not decisions you have to make on funding, they're just some final adjustments that, that we need community to see that will be part of this budget.
We got our teacher and some.
I can make that bigger for you all. All right, so.
It's not adjusting on the screen.
It's not adjusting on the screen? Well, what I'll, um, do is go ahead, start summarizing, hopefully Kelly can help us make this a little bit bigger. What we have prepared for revenues is under, um, Vice Chairman Jeffers' proposal of a additional one cent property tax increase, which would bring in another four hundred thirty-eight thousand, five eighty-six in revenue and then a general fund, fund balance appropriation of one million dollars and that would be transferred to the Water and Sewer Fund Reserve for future projects. Uh, over on the expenditure side, expenditure side, we also have the compression study implemented in two years rather than three, an additional two hundred fifty thousand for economic development. But we believe that the feasibility study was twenty-four thousand, but we will confirm that number whether it's twenty-five or twenty-four thousand. There's a couple of smaller adjustments, there's a reclass in the Finance Department that's no longer going to happen, so that's, um, additional four thousand, two sixty-six. And then the YES program, which Commissioner Powell asked about, um, when the recommended budget was put together, we had the fifty-five thousand, one sixty-six for that program set aside, but now that the JCPC Board has made some decisions, we can now fully move that into the YES program budget. Any additional, uh, revenue that was generated by the property tax rate increase, uh, we believe at this time will be twenty-one thousand, seven-ten, but we will have to do some revenue adjustments based on the decisions here today. So, but any additional funds, we were planning to put that into undesigned contingency at this time. Then in the bottom half of the screen, we have an additional thirty hun, excuse me, thirty-two thousand, four eighty-seven in E nine-one-one telephone surcharge funding, which the E nine-one-one Board approved for us after the recommended budget, so that will increase their budget. Then we have our, our small, um, uh, correction, our small, our changes today with the one million dollar in fund balance for the Water and Sewer Fund and Al Tirza Reserve Fund. Then Economic Catalyst Fund, we have a fund balance appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars, which would be used for the Workforce Pipeline Grant. And then there were some questions about the Woodsdale VFD contract, so we would move that thirty thousand dollars out of their specific, um, amount and move it into an unallocated amount while that contract is reviewed. So those are some little adjustments, uh, in addition to the ones that we discussed today, that we will be including in our budget ordinance next Monday. Are there any questions at this time?
Everybody got any questions?
Could we get, copy that by email?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Yes, so the clerk, but we'll make sure that you can. Thank you.
All right, I need a motion to go in the closed session. All right. I need a motion to go in the closed session then, I guess.
So may.
All in favor, say aye. All righty. Thank y'all for coming. I'm sure you're here.